Recording. All right, I'm letting everybody in now.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Let us know when it seems like we're clear, Jay. Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, so welcome to the March monthly meeting, Cold Spring Village Board of Trustees, everyone. Jeff, would you call the role, please?
Sure, Mayor Foley.
Here.
Trustee Cardo.
Here.
Trustee Fatty.
Here.
Trustee Starbucks.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Thanks. First item is opportunity to request to vote to add or modify agenda items. On the agenda under 22B, we received a notice from the New York State Liquor Authority for the business known as Paulette's on Main Street to seeking a wine, beer, and cider license. There is no vote on our part. It's just a notice to us, a courtesy notice from the Liquor Authority, but because it wasn't shared out with us or the public, I'm gonna make a motion to table it so that if we have any discussion next week, folks will have had a chance to look at it. Is someone willing to second that?
I will. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And again, there's no, there's no impact on the business owner and her process. Okay, any other requests? All right, let's roll right into financial report. Michelle's gonna tell us and the public about our budget timeline and process.
Okay, so let's start a little backwards. May 1st is when we have to adopt the budget. So all the meetings will happen before then, and that's the end goal is May 1st. So right now, we have scheduled a meeting tomorrow, Thursday, March 10th, at 9:30 in the morning. It's executive session. That budget discussion is for personnel and staffing. Then the next scheduled budget discussion is again in the morning on Tuesday 15th. That'll mostly be to go over revenues of all three funds, general water and sewer. Then the next day on Wednesday, March 16th, at a regularly scheduled board meeting at 7:00 PM, there'll be a budget discussion. We'll take a couple minutes to the revenue that we went on Tuesday, and then this will be a detailed line by line or department, group by department group of the budgets. We'll see how far we can get through the budget, and then we'll schedule meetings, you know, as we feel that we need them to keep continuing to talk about the expenses. By Sunday, March 20th, be a tentative budget available, so that'll go up on the website by March 21st. So the public tentative, the board and us are welcome to make as many changes as we want. It's just like a preliminary balanced budget. Wednesday, April 13th, I think we should plan to do the public hearing. We'll have to, as we get closer, officially set that date, but that's what I'm aiming for. And then pending the outcome of the public hearing, if changes need to be made, we can make them. And then I'd like to adopt the budget on Wednesday, April 27th. We'll do a resolution. So we can make changes, like I said, anytime from now through the tentative, after the tentative, all the way up to adopting. We'll keep the public updated through our meetings. They'll all be recorded and posted so that anybody can see, you know, the line-by-line discussions and what goes on. And then we'll have that tentative budget up by March 21st. Um, any other dates that we should add at this point in time?
I don't think so. I think you've mapped it out clearly.
Okay.
Just a note, we are, we are doing some meetings during the day to try to optimize Michelle's time so that she's not burning through evenings that could be family time, so where we can do day meetings, we are. But obviously, those meetings are open to the public. If you want to come hang out with us at Village Hall on a Tuesday or Thursday morning when we have those sessions, and they will be recorded online, as Michelle said. Thank you. And then you have a couple other items for us, right?
Yes, so just two other quick things. As we go through the budget, I'm also working on projections for, we're nine months in at the close of February. So as we work on the budget moving forward, we're planning on what needs to be spent and what's coming up for the next three months. So in a couple days, I should have those reports done, and I'll give a report to the different departments, basically saying, we budgeted for this. Is this something that you want to spend, or is this something that we don't need anymore? And maybe we can reallocate towards another project in the village.
And that'll help us do our, our planning for projects in the spring, what we can, we can get through.
And then ARPA, as we previously, previously discussed, we'll have to have our first report due on April 30th. So I think after we move through some of the big chunks of the budget, and then we can have a discussion on, you know, what we want to put in our ARPA report on what exactly which projects we want to try and aim for with the ARPA funding.
Have we been given a format yet for what that report needs to look like?
Though I did get an email yesterday. I haven't gone into the portal yet, but I will check on it. I did get something yesterday from the Treasury.
Okay.
Michelle, are all of those meetings at 9:30, the, the morning ones?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
No, right now, the only one we have, morning meeting we have scheduled is the 15th at 9:30.
And tomorrow at 10:00.
And tomorrow, yes.
That's a, that's a close session.
That's an executive session. So the only budget hearing that's right now scheduled is on the 15th.
Right, and.
10:00 tomorrow, Kathleen?
9:30.
10:30, cool.
9:30.
9:30.
I know you got, got your hopes up, didn't you? Um, and.
Hit Paulette's for coffee.
Just for the benefit of the public, when, when personnel matters are discussed, it is an appropriate executive session. Okay, so as we move through department and board reports, I just want to remind everyone that the full reports are available online, so you can read in detail if you're, if you're into that kind of detail. But tonight, we're, we're trying, we have a long, a long agenda and lots of items, so we've asked for departments and boards to highlight particular areas, and several of the reports are going to relate to budget as we start going into discussions for budget. So the first is the Highway Department. I don't think we have Bugsy. I think he's still out dealing with sidewalks.
Yeah, he's not, he's not here.
So, um, so Bugsy now free of, of garbage, which trustee Cardo will give us a little update on, I think, in a second, is looking to the spring. I've hoped that you've seen that around the village, they've already begun cold patching potholes to tide us over until repaving season, so I'm sure you've seen, seen the team out. They'll continue to do that. He is making a work plan, prioritizing what can be done in-house, and creating a work plan for what can be sort of farmed out by bid to get some big projects out of the way and get us caught up on deferred maintenance. So that is what the guys are working on now. We have a couple of updates from Royal. Joe, did you see the email that came in late in the day from Royal?
I saw one of the two.
Okay, do you want to go through that?
Yeah, I'll just do a quick update on garbage. So last week, we received the fully executed contracts, all signed and returned from Royal. Insurances and the performance bonds are all in motion. Royal took over fully on March 8th, staff-wise, and by contract, March 1st. Just to note, in their February invoice for emergency services, they discounted it by 20%, which is worth about three grand, I believe. So thank you, Royal. We're working with the office, Jeff specifically, who's drafting a letter that's gonna go out shortly to all the tax parcels, just highlighting what the process will be as far as bin delivery, picking your bin size. Everybody by default's gonna get a 95 and 65 gallon. You can choose a smaller size. There'll be a form available for that, and this letter will specify that whole process. It'll simultaneously go on the website, social media, and Eliza and I spent some time last week talking about doing a further outreach on Main Street to some of the merchants. So we pretty much will cover everybody, hopefully in the village, as to what the process will be. Royal sent an email today saying that the bins are tentatively scheduled to be delivered April 7th and distributed to the village on two successive Saturdays thereafter. As those dates get closer, we'll confirm that. So the way they're gonna do it, as they've commented prior, was over two Saturdays, they will deliver those bins to each tax parcel address. So you don't have to go pick them up. They'll be dropped off. And he also commented today that there'll be a 20-yard container at the Village highway garage that people could drop off their old garbage cans for recycling.
Actually, excuse me, Joe, for interrupting, but we do need to, we do need to talk about that because we don't want the public back in that, in that roadway and area. We need to choose another location. So maybe we can talk with, with Bugsy and Larry about an alternate location for that.
Okay, and we'll see if we can get that all specified before the letter goes out, so everything will be in that letter. That's pretty clear and detailed.
Great. Just a safety issue. Thank you.
Correct. So basically, you know, this should work very well. They've done it multiple, multiple times. I think once this letter does go out and it's on the website and it's on social media, it'll just be clear as to the process. But we have no anticipation that there should be any glitches, and as these dates get closer, we'll firm them up with regards to delivery and distribution and such. And that's, that's it. That's pretty much an update.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe or any other comments on Highway?
I do. When you say tax parcels, Joe, so the landlords will be getting letters, like they get their tax bill, whoever gets the tax bill would get a letter.
Yeah, whoever would be specified on that tax parcel would get the letter. Part of the Main Street outreach, I think, will be to kind of target people who would deem to be tenants. And by all intensive purposes, there's gonna be enough word of mouth going around. So if somebody didn't know about something, that would probably be a rarity. And I don't know if, Eliza, there's anything you want to add to that outreach process?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we'll be, we'll be using social media. We'll be emailing. We'll be sending out letters. So everyone should get contacted one of five ways, and I'll definitely door-to-dooring on Main Street with the help, hopefully, of the Chamber of Commerce, who I'll be working with, to communicate this. So I think we'll get it done, and we have some time. You know, we have a couple weeks before they start landing. So we'll get it ironed out. Make sure everyone knows.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
When I saw the, the change from Tuesday to Thursday, I called my landlord because the property, you know, the fellow who does all the work, Jose, he, he would have put it out. And I called the office and they didn't, they didn't know a thing. So at least I can tell you that Love Realty knows. They're on board.
That's it.
I think I were gonna call Jeff.
That's a big property owner on Main Street, so you've knocked out a few buildings there with that. Thank you for that call, Catherine. The, there, some folks did put out their garbage the other night. Sorry for the inconvenience. We did our best to get everyone by every means possible, newspaper ads, social media, emails, et cetera. So if you, tonight's the night. Tonight's our new night, so bring the garbage back out to the curbs, and it'll be picked up and gone in the morning. Okay, thanks. Water and wastewater, a few things. The, so we talked a couple of weeks ago about another source of, potential source of ARPA money, ARPA being the Federal Recovery Act money. $19 million went to the county. Here in Cold Spring, we got about $200,000. And the county executive and commissioner of finance requested that municipalities put forward proposals for how some of that money might be distributed across the county. I'm, I'm hoping that we see 10% come back to Phillips Town to reflect our population. But for the village, we focused our request entirely on, on the dam, money toward, toward the dam. The estimates as of 2011, the estimate, the last estimates were done about 2011. We have some engineering updates to do, so the numbers, the numbers need to be updated, but we're at a point where we can't wait anymore, and we hope very much to get help with engineering and getting that project off the ground. And as part of that, I did reestablish relationships with the DEP for considering next steps, and we have some conversations to have about access to the dam easements, et cetera. So that is moving forward. I wish it could all be done tomorrow, but we're making, we're making progress. Another update from water is the, there is a building at wastewater that is not enclosed. It has our diesel generator in it as backup, that there are sounds emanating from that building that are bothersome to folks across the street, and we are trying very hard to work on that. There, there needs to be some more engineering of that structure to make sure we get the ventilation right on the diesel machine. So Joe is working with an HVAC company to get a safe, a safe plan to make sure we're enclosing the diesel engine properly when we do enclose it, but that is also in process. Okay, that's in on water for a moment. Okay, well, report from that, from the building department. And I am sad to say that Charlotte Mountain has resigned her position, however, she is here tonight catching up on some, some applications. She's the other person moving around Village Hall tonight. Charlotte has taken full-time employment in Newburgh in a supervisory position in the building department there. It's a great move for her, a great step up. We are sad to lose her expertise. She has agreed to stay on, on Saturdays through the end of March to help us wrap up things that are due at this time of year, a New York State report, to transition us on active applications and to, to make sure that we all have a sense of where things are with applications and process. For the time being, we have made a temporary, we are talking with the town, thank you, Bob, a temporary engagement so that we do have code, and we can't not have code enforcement while we decide what to do next. And so the, the town has extended their code enforcement officer and fire marshal to us on a monthly basis while we consider what to do next. We, we do not yet have a contract, but we are looking at a sort of a prorated amount based on the last intermunicipal agreement that we had with the town. So that buys us some time to really think through what our needs are in the department and how we best, how we best serve the village. You know, Charlotte's time became quite scattered, and there were large chunks of the week when we, there was no one here. And this is a time when we're heading into busy season, so we are covered for the moment, but we need to think long-term about how we want to handle code enforcement and fire inspections. So much as I hate to make a motion to accept Charlotte's resignation, I do make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to Charlotte.
Well, just one thing. We're in the process of hiring another part-time building inspector as well, so hopefully that's gonna help the situation as well.
That's great. I know you all are, you all are focusing on increasing fire inspections as well. Thanks, Bob. Okay, so we have Officer in Charge Burke with us tonight, and we asked him to speak to two particular topics. The first one relates to cameras. We are having discussions as part of our budget related to body cameras for our officers. As one set of cameras and a second set of cameras is security cameras for the dock area where we've had incidents of vandalism repeatedly, the tunnel and potentially Mayor's Park. It's very likely we're not able to afford all of those things, and we may need to look at them in staged patterns, but the question was raised when we were together last as a board is, why, why, why do we have these requests before us? So that's the first piece that I'll ask Larry, please. You're muted, Larry.
How's that?
Yep, we got you.
Sorry about that. Um, as, as the mayor just had said, we've had a couple of incidents that I was made aware of. We had some more criminal mischief in the bathrooms down at Mayor's Park. They did not go through the bathroom doors. They went around the backside and somehow climbed up through an opening in the roof and dropped down into the bathroom and did some damage, I believe, a week or so ago. So that would have been pretty much out of the visibility of the patrol officer if he went by. Again, that could have been at any time. The officer could have been up on Parrot Street or up, going through the school, and they could have broken down then that way. Also, the pump tunnel room down in the MTA, Bugsy told me they cut the lock down there to get into the pump room. Evidently, they didn't do anything there. I don't know what they thought, they thought was in there, but that lock was broken. The cameras that I've requested, and I've requested them in the past on multiple occasions, would help the officers, again, we have one officer that, that patrols the village 24/7, 365, the whole village, not just down at Mayor's Park, not just down at the bathroom area or down by docks, down by the dock. I have reached out, I have emailed all my officers, and also I've spoken to them individually when I can about increased patrol, which they have, especially in the hotspots, which is the dock, the bathrooms at Mayor's Park, and the tunnel. And anytime that we've had any other reports of vandalism and/or criminal mischief in any of the areas of the village. So they've been doing that by patrolling more frequently. The cameras, what I was requesting, would help us twofold on that. If the officer's not down there to challenge anybody that might be on the, on the dock after 11 o'clock when it closes, at least if anything does happen, the cameras would catch any individuals doing any type of damage or criminal mischief to the, to the lights, to the bandstand itself, and/or any other part of lower main in that area. Again, it's not a catch-all. If, you know, if somebody goes down there with, with, you know, hoodie on, a mask on, gloves, you know, stuff like that, but again, it would be a deterrent, in my professional opinion, a deterrent if they saw the cameras, that they wouldn't do that. Also, looking at my notes, we've had some graffiti in the MTA tunnel that was reported a couple of weeks ago, and Bugsy and the crew have gone in and cleaned that up. There was some vulgarity in some photos. Putting cameras in the tunnel area inside on both entrances at the bottom of the staircase, hopefully, again, would alleviate somebody trying to do the graffiti on the walls down there. Also, looking at the cameras, if we had the cameras down at, let's say, dock side, or not dock side, I'm sorry, down at the dock or the bandstand or other areas in the park, it also would help if somebody claimed that they fell, somebody claimed they got injured on village property for a lawsuit. We can go back and look at the cameras and see if that indeed was true. And just to let you know, I remember when we had put up the LPR cameras approximately a year and a half ago, I had a lot of people saying, basically, why do we have those? You know, why are you putting that up outside the village area? But the LPR camera that we did put up on 9D just south of the village did help the sheriff's office recently identify the vehicle that was involved in the armed robbery down at the Sunoco Station in Garrison, and with the information that they got off the camera, they were able to track the car and eventually, after their investigation, track them over to the other side of the water. I believe it was over Newburgh where they placed the gentleman under arrest, and it is a key point of evidence that the DA is gonna go forward with using to put a timeframe together to prosecute that, that individual. That's what I have on the cameras. Are there any questions?
I have questions. First of all, thank you for your report and letting the public know what's happening at our parks. Of course, more eyes is always the best way to prevent crime, especially where things like graffiti are happening. What is the process if we, because the last time the cameras went up for the, the roads on 9D, it was kind of a shock to much of the public. And so my question is, I know you and Mayor Foley had been working on an updated sort of guidelines for the police department. Are those included in that update? You know, what, what protects the community from their privacy being abused by any officers who have access to the cameras? Do we, do we have a ban on facial recognition technology? Do we have requirements that footage may only be reviewed if an incident is reported and filed by the police department? Do we have limits of officer video footage review that are strictly to the officer in charge? Do we have, are there, are there rules where the DA can only request access to video footage by subpoena only? Do we require a regular review and report on the effectiveness of cameras? And camera surveillance, like rates on crime reduction or increases from year to year, the number of crimes reported in locations with cameras, the rates of crime or reduction in areas with cameras versus without cameras, the rates of crime solved with surveillance versus going unsolved? What, what do we have in place before we purchase cameras that ensures that these are, A, worth the money that we're gonna spend, and B, protecting the rights of our citizens and doing the job that you need them to do?
Okay. Could I take the policy question? Larry, could I take the policy question and then?
Go ahead.
And the technical portions to you? So among the, the policy drafts that we have from LexiPaul is a camera policy that Larry and Officer Demato worked on that needs to come before the community advisory board to get their opinion, and then it would need to be adopted by the Board of Trustees. So many of the issues that you just raised in terms of policy, we need, we need to adopt so that we have them in place. There is a, Larry, can you talk to the LPR policy?
Well, that, that was my question. Eliza asked about a five-point question on that. I'd like to take them out one at a time to properly answer them correctly. Were you asking specifically about the LPRs, which those questions have really already been answered when they went up? When I spoke with the people that the cameras were in their areas, talking about Nelsonville, I met with the mayor and the village board. I explained to them what the policy was with the open LPR, which all camera feeds go down to the real-time crime center down in Westchester. It also connects with the Department of County Real-Time Crime Center. So all the information that is, the photos that are taken with vehicles going underneath the camera go to that specific police facility where nobody has access except for a supervisor or somebody requesting some information off of the camera. It has to go through a request. It has to go through a supervisor. It has to go through them looking at the, the information that they're seeking. The district attorney would not ask them for that. It would go through the proper channels of a police department. Case, let's say, if, you know, the state police had a, a, a case of an ongoing robbery suspect or whatever, and they asked, asked them for information on a certain vehicle, say, a 1984 Jeep Wrangler with a New York plate number, and they give them the plate number, have they had that go, that vehicle go through any of the cameras that they're observing in the last past, I believe, its state policy is three years, if I'm not mistaken. So that, they would request that from them, and they would, that would go from police agency to police agency. Nobody on the outside would be able to look at that information, if that's what you're asking about the LPRs.
So that, that answers the question about the LPRs, but specific to the proposal of putting cameras in our parks.
Okay.
Our public property and our spaces where people go to enjoy themselves. Those cameras are not obviously scanning anyone's license plates, but they may be scanning people's faces. And there was a case several years ago where a gentleman, you know, his, actually, it was a fingerprint scan, but it's a similar technology, but somehow it was a mismatch. but somehow it was a mismatch and, um, there was a terrorist case in Europe. And he, he is, he was taken by the United States government based on this technological match. Move, taken to Europe to go to court for a terrorist case. He was actually innocent, but he, you know, lost months of his life.
So Eliza, what's the question that's relevant to Cold Spring?
Question that's relevant to Cold Spring is that are we going to be putting cameras in our parks that uses facial, facial recognition technology that will, you know, if I have a doppelganger that looks like me who committed a crime in Kentucky? And it's going through this connection of all of the office, official officer channels matching everybody who looks like that. And now I have a dot that I look similar. Is that going to, you know, like, is my privacy going to be abused by this?
No, let, let me answer that straight off the bat. It's, it's basically a surveillance camera just for an enclosed system that only goes to Cold Spring. So it would come to my office. It would be locked. Nobody had access except for myself. Um, and it's basically just to deter people from breaking lights, smashing things in the village. It has nothing to do with, I, we couldn't afford facial recognition. It's not to do that. It's just to tell me that two, two o'clock in the morning, somebody went down to the dock, they smashed three lights. I can go look at the camera. I can get a description of the clothing. I could try to see if I can get a, a, a face out of it. Maybe it's a local that I know or try to pinpoint exactly what time it happened. And then I can actually go and look at other cameras that businesses have to try to track a person from their ring cameras or their surveillance cameras out front to pinpoint where that individual came from. So we can possibly go and find that individual, to talk to them and ask them why they're doing that. If their kids talk to their parents or if it's an older person to, to possibly take them, you know, under arrest and put, and put them through this, the, the court system to repay back what the village has lost. In no way would it be shared with any other, uh, police department or any other, uh, federal, uh, law enforcement agency whatsoever. It's our system. It'll be totally enclosed to just us.
How many officers will have access to this? Will this, or will?
Just me.
Okay.
Just me. And they can request if, if it's an, if it's an ongoing, if they call me in the morning and I'd say, hey Larry, I was up on the midnight last night, uh, we had four of the lights looking down on, down at the dock. I will come in, I will review the video and I will do that myself.
I had a question. Um, specific to the tunnel, you said that the entrance, you know, on either side, um, would they possibly be at risk to vandalism? Because they're low enough to?
We, we, they most certainly would be. I thought about putting them high on the outside of the tunnel, but then we wouldn't get to see who went in the tunnel and who graffitied or damaged property. So we'd have to put them lower on the ceiling and caged in a, either a glass, uh, plexiglass or some type of wire mesh or some, something to that effect to be able to do that. They, they, I thought of that too. It will be, uh, you know, uh, not tall enough, uh, for them to be out of reach. I did take that in, into effect, but that's the only way to cover the tunnel properly.
I have another question about the tunnel actually. Um, does the vandalism that happens in the tunnel require the cost of cameras? I mean, it, it's paint. So you, you can paint over it. It's not like, are, are we, are we having major damage happening in the tunnel? Or does it really require two expensive cameras and a surveillance system there?
The, the village, the village asked me for my opinion. I gave them my opinion. Those are low on the totem pole. So if we can, if we have to remove those and not put them in, that's fine. You're right. I, it's, it's not, it's, it's one of my lower, uh, requests. I'd like them to have them elsewhere. But if we were going to get a bundle package and we had extra cameras that we can put, those are the places I want to put.
Okay.
So Larry, would you prioritize the three hotspots as dock first, mayor second, tunnel third?
Yes.
Like, okay.
Uh, dock, definitely number one, because again, we have, we have, you know, we've been lucky enough where we haven't had too, too much of, other than vandalism. And I know it's very expensive with those lights, but you know, God forbid something happens where there's a domestic down there and, and something happens and somebody gets thrown in the water or whatever. At least we have surveillance. Again, I have to think a worst-case scenario. That's my business. That's what I've been doing. Um, that would be my priority. Uh, Mayor's Park would be priority number two and then, and so forth.
Got it. And do you think at Mayor's Park that lights around the restroom area on a photo sensor that kind of goes on and off when people are right there would be a deterrent as well?
That would be if it doesn't, if it doesn't cost that much, but I did notice, uh, from the individual that was doing the, um, the car break-ins, a lot of people had the motion floodlights on. And once the light went on, if nobody came out of the house, he continued into the, into the, into the driveway and opened the car anyway. Uh, but again, that may, that may scare some of the kids that are going down there if they are, if those are the kids doing that. I, I would love to see the whole thing get lit up, absolutely. So then even if my patrol is coming down the block, they can see a light, uh, hit on it. But again, also if you do motion, you're talking about deer, you're talking about, you know, raccoons, you're talking about possums, right down by the water, the lights will be going on and off. And your next complaint will be somebody living over there saying the lights are going on and off all night.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other board comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I have, um, I guess more of a comment. I mean, I think that we are, uh, really live, um, in this wonderful, uh, village where our biggest complaints about, at least in terms of crime, is about, uh, destruction of property. But I think that we should be cognizant of the fact that, um, things can change. Things do change. Bad things happen. And if tomorrow it's not, you know, someone gets attacked in the tunnel versus someone just putting up graffiti in the tunnel, I, I would think that having information and being able to track that person would be very valuable for us. Um, you know, I think it's not just about, uh, paint at this point. I think we should be cognizant that we live in a bigger society and a bigger world where things do happen.
Any further? Uh, Eliza, I appreciate your questions. Um, I think that it raises issue, raises concerns, um, and things we need to think about in terms of prioritization. Um, we do have a limited budget. So we have, we always have to, with everything that we commit to financially, we have to take priorities in mind. Um, and also, um, the advisory board, the, the, um, community policing advisory board is going to be having access to the drafts from LexiPaul, um, and giving feedback to us as we consider, um, adopting those. We have a chunk of chapters, a big chunk of chapters, um, that have been reviewed already and are ready for the board to look at. Um, we just sort of need to think about how we roll them out. Um, and when we can, when we have the time to do that, we've had a few other urgent things that have pulled our attention away, but there are at least, I think, Larry, I think we had 12 ready, as I recall. Um, so there is, there is, there is a chunk ready, sorry?
At least.
At least.
At least 12.
May, maybe more. So anyway, in the hopper.
I have one more question about that. Will the, um, police, the community police board be reviewing, um, surveillance camera approach or anything before? And some, like if we, you know, before we buy them, are they going to, you know, do the research or look into, um, reasons for and against and advise our board? I, I would love to have their weigh-in on this. I, I respect Larry's, um, advice, but I also think that this group is specifically, um, created to review these kinds of choices. And I would, I would like to see them weigh in and provide their advice as well.
We can certainly prioritize that chapter among the, among the first they look at. Any further discussion? Thank you very much, Eliza. And Larry, we have a couple more, um, questions for you. Um, we did have a complaint this week received in the village, um, related to the operation of a short-term rental, um, without a permit. And as, as folks know, we are having troubles with that, with that chapter, um, enforcement of the chapter and have, um, requested of the village attorney draft, um, some moratorium language, um, for us to consider as a board in public session, um, as part of a public hearing. That has not arrived yet, um, and we do have this complaint. And, um, so it was forwarded to the village attorney and also to Officer Burke, uh, currently under the, under the standing code, after the initial, um, safety inspection by the code enforcement officer, the enforcement of the short-term rental code, um, is left to the police department, um, which is problematic on a number of levels. And I've asked Larry if he could clarify why that's problematic and why it makes enforcement difficult.
Um, I was not originally, uh, notified about what the former board put together on their short-term rentals and/or Airbnbs. Um, I'm not saying that they, they, you know, did not maybe had forwarded something to me, uh, that I either missed or, uh, I didn't see, but I would have certainly, uh, pushed back on that. Um, you cannot use, uh, police law enforcement to, uh, enforce civil laws to that point, which is somebody's residence, somebody's renting either short-term or either a house or maybe an apartment or subletting or, um, whatever it may be that they're, they're doing. Uh, because that would not fall under, um, a uniformed police officer response. That would be more of a code enforcement response. Um, uh, with that specifically, I, I don't feel and I don't think it, it, it's a good look to have a, a police officer knock on a door on a complaint of a neighbor saying that they're a short-term, um, uh, Airbnb or, or short-term rental. Uh, um, and I know for a fact that they didn't get a permit, um, for us to knock on the door. Also, you know, talking about armed police officers going, trying to find out who's in the residence, who owns the residence, uh, challenging the person that's in the rental to pro, uh, provide ID and, and/or, um, a permit, uh, that the owner of the, uh, building that they're renting from, short-term rentals, uh, if they had a permit for it or, or what may be, um, because it leads to so many openings on lawsuits, so many openings on, uh, escalating, uh, the incident, um, with, with doing that. Uh, and again, it's just at this stage of the game, it's just, it's more of a civil matter. And the only way that the police officers can do, um, example, like if somebody was getting evicted, they'd have to go through a court, court system. The court would have to, uh, agree to give the eviction notice. And then like in the sheriff's office, then it goes to law enforcement, um, and they would go and they would do an actual eviction out of, uh, the resident. So, uh, again, that goes through a court. It goes through a judge's order, uh, would not be an officer just knocking on the door from a complaint that my next-door neighbor doesn't have a proper permit to do a short-term rental. Um, it's basically what it seemed that law with that, with that, um, ordinance that they signed, it was more of a catch-all for the police to pretty much do all code enforcement, which you cannot do.
Larry, and obviously this is one of the, the many issues that need to be addressed as we reexamine a local short-term rental law and, um, and as part of that also, Trustee Starbuck and, um, Fatty have been investigating, um, uh, technological approaches to identifying, um, short-term rentals and being able to track, um, permits, um, from a, with technology using, using, um, proprietary software. Um, so that's something that we're looking at as well.
And also if I may, mayor, uh, also if I may, if, if you, we did find it safe, we did do it, it was a code violation. It's almost like the, the, uh, snow removal. The snow has to be cleared in front of your residence within 24 hours of the last snowfall. The actual summons has to be handed to the owner or the person renting that, uh, that house or apartment or storefront. It has to be personally handed to them. You can't just stick it in the mailbox and, and, and expect them to show up to court. So that's kind of the same type of thing. If I, we were to do that violation, am I handing it to the person who's renting, is doing the rental? They're, they're going to look at me and say, I'm not accepting that. I mean, like I said, it just leads to so much more and it will escalate, uh, a situation at that point.
So these are important details that we need to address. Board members have a question? Catherine, is that you?
Uh, I do have a question. I mean, if as the code is written, you are in violation just by advertising it. I mean, is that Airbnb advertised? I mean, how, what was supposed to happen? Um, were they supposed to get a letter? I mean, can they still, can the owner still get a letter saying, you know, we've been advised that you're not in compliance and that you do have a complaint? And, you know, we'd like to, uh, to, you know, bring you into compliance and have, you know, have a conversation about that. But I mean, in, in the short run, they're in violation.
They are. The, the challenge is that, that under the code, the follow-up and enforcement is the police department. Um, after the initial inspection, it dumps to the police department and it gets us right back to where we were. Um, and this is, this is why I, we have asked the village attorney to prepare something for us so that we can begin to have the discussion, to, to pause where we are and improve, improve the structure of the law so that it is enforceable without escalating, as Larry pointed out. Does that answer the question?
Mine? Yes.
Okay.
So I have one quick question.
The code, the way it's written, it doesn't call for warnings. It goes right to penalty. And I believe the penalty for the first offense is up to a thousand dollar fine, the way the code's written.
So why can't we just mail a letter and find them?
So one of the problems, Catherine, you're looking specifically at advertising, is that a number of listings have only interior photographs and, and the address isn't listed. So are we to have a look at the photographs and say, well, that looks like Jane's house? I'm going to, I'm going to issue a fine to Jane.
I see your point.
And we don't have our police officers that have law enforcement jobs to do. They don't have time to sit on the internet looking for short-term rental listings. And, and frankly, neither does our code enforcement officer right now.
No, no.
So we need, that, that's, as we think about building department, that, that's an aspect of enforcement that we need to further consider. And the previous board did have some discussion about bringing on additional staff, but now we need, we need staff to do the basics, um, first. So that's where we are.
I just had a hypothetical question, so I just understand this a little bit better. So in other words, let's assume hypothetically, um, it's 11 o'clock at night, I'm sitting on my back porch doing whatever I'm doing. The neighbor next to me is making a ton of noise. My general inclination, or some people's inclination, would be to call the police. A lot of times the police would come out, I would assume, just tell those people to keep it down.
Correct.
Do you then refer that to the code department for them to follow up? Like, well, how does that procedure work? Because I think that example is something that probably does happen more often than not.
Uh, since I've been here, I, we have not written to, uh, I have not written, seen any noise, noise, actual, uh, songs just written. Most of the time the officer shows up the first time and it ceases and desists. If it continues, then whoever is at that location, if we go back again, they will get, they will, uh, receive a summons for the noise on the village ordinance for a noise complaint. And that person being there would have to come into, uh, into court and answer that summons. We don't challenge them to see if they live there or not. It's just whoever's at, at the house at the time.
Okay.
And that comes from a separate noise ordinance. So, so Larry is able to enforce based on the noise ordinance, separate and apart from any reference to noise in the short-term rental.
Got it.
Um, ordinance.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Any other discussion for, while we have Larry?
I just, um.
I'm sorry, it's not, not public comment portion yet. Jeff, it's board conversation right now. Thank you. Um, but we will have public comment at the, at the end. Um, just noting that officers Davenport, Barclay and Christiansen did, um, start their training and they're in uniform and on the street. So welcome to them. Okay. I think that there are two people from the fire company here. Tonight, who's, hi Jeff, Jeff Phillips is the chief.
All right. So I'm not going to bore you guys going through the whole report. We did 19 calls for February, six of which were mutual aid, two to North, or sorry, two to Garrison, four to North Highlands. And then the other two, I guess you'd say major calls were two mountain rescues, both in the same week. One of which I'm sure you guys saw on Facebook, acquired state police with their helicopter. So. Great job done by all on that one.
Well done.
That's all I have. If there's any questions. That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank, thank you, Chief. Uh, justice court, no report. The court was closed last week. Jeff, I assume that, that the court clerk still needs to submit a monthly report to you, even though it's, she's not, it hasn't. She wasn't here on Friday to turn it in.
I submitted one late this afternoon, so I did not send it out or include it in this packet. It'll, it'll be added.
So it'll be added to the online.
Yep.
Documentation.
It'll be with the minutes. I will let it, um, all the reports go with the minutes too.
Okay. Next is Historic District Review Board, and I asked that board to give us a quick update on where they are with the design standards. A grant was given by the State Historic Preservation Office a number of years ago to update our sorely outdated design standards that govern materials, massing, et cetera. Considerations of scale. And Lloyd, if you can let us know, the text has been drafted. Tell us what you're working on and how close you're, you're coming.
Good evening, everybody on board. Yes, we are nearing an endpoint. We have a good draft that has been laid out by the graphic designer. We're conducting now a final review of the main body of the design standards. Inserting a, a few additional pictures that were taken and doing a scrub of the, the text in some locations where it's still needed. And our goal is to get that back to the graphic designer by next week and to have the first portion, the main body of the text done. Let's say mid-April, but let's say, say end of April. And then we need to continue working on the resource guides, as they're called. There are a number of appendix, appendices to the main body. She has, we, we asked her just to double check how we were doing with our fee for her graphic design effort and uh, she's requesting an additional $2,000. I realize that the budgeting phase has, has passed for the village, but wanted to bring it up anyway. We, we haven't discussed it much as a board or completely vetted that, but it's, it's a possibility that that might be needed to, to do the complete document.
Lloyd, actually, we're, we're just beginning the budgeting process. So if that's something that you, if that's something you need, that's one of the reasons I asked for an update because I've been working with the graphic designer for some time and I figured that you'd burned through what, what, what had been budgeted. So if, if you need additional funding to get this done, we're heading into, we're heading into construction season and, you know, and another year with those outdated standards is just, it's just hard to work with for you and for the public. So if your budget is something you need to push it forward, this is the time to send a, a message to Michelle.
Okay, we will do that then for, for an additional $2,000. We'll add that request to her.
Do you think that you will be adopting the main body of the text? Can you, can you consider adopting the main body of the text for use before you finish the?
Yes.
Okay. So that could get, that could get at least the, the working portion of the document.
Yes, exactly.
So your, your goal is to get it done by mid-April?
But, but let's say end of April to be, to be safe. Didn't discuss with the board about when we might be voting on it, but well, we can try to fit it all in April. Let's, let's shoot for that.
Okay. And these are just for clarity, these are, this is not, it's not like a, a local law. These are, these are the, the working documents of the board that are accepted as operating guidance for the board. It's not a, it's not a public hearing in the way an ordinance change is. But the board will have, I know you have done a series of focus groups and have, have been taking input along the way.
Right, we have. And we have the, the map changed. There was a change to the, an update to the map. Which did require a public hearing, but we, we are taking it out of the document and referring to that, that new map. Wherever it ends up living.
With the clerk. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, any questions for Lloyd? From the board? Thanks for the update.
Sure. Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Okay. Planning Board Chair Goldstein is not here, but a couple of, a couple of quick updates. The public hearing for Butterfield Building One is scheduled for tomorrow night. I am happy to report that on 40 Main Street, the retail and office mixed-use development proposed for Lower Main Street. The terms that the village board put forward for the parking agreement were accepted by the building owner today. And now the village attorney and his attorney can proceed with papering that agreement. And that clears the planning board to continue its conversations for 40 Main. Uh, so we've, they've been notified, the planning board's been notified that we have an agreement there. So that's good news. Zoning Board has been quiet. Lucky them. No, no business in February. A couple of quick items from the Tree Advisory Board. Chair Swarick was not able to join us this evening. Jen Swarick, who heads the Tree Advisory Board, had a meeting at Dockside this week with State Parks and their arborists and landscape architects, having a look at the trees that are on site. There is a planting plan for, sorry that the number of new trees escapes me, but there is a planting plan. And in part of preparation, the trees that are on site, which need pruning or removal, that, that work will be done by the state. And there has been consultation with our, the arborist that advises the Tree Advisory Board and the state's advising arborist. And there was consensus that unfortunately, some of the trees do have to be removed, but they, it's a, it's a public safety issue that we can't, we can't mess around with. So there are more news will be forthcoming on that. If you see, if you see work happening on trees at Dockside, it had, it is under the, the guidance of a licensed arborist and, and State Parks. And budget, related to that, the Tree Advisory Board has asked for an expanded budget to deal with limbs on public trees that, that are deemed hazardous. We have a lot of work to catch up on. And among the things that we are talking about during the budget process is trying to give some of that money now so they can get going in the spring and then shift the balance into the next budget time. But it's, that is on our radar. Okay. Rec Commission, I think Chair Amato is with us.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So you have my report. I'll be brief. First, we had approval of the 9/11 memorial sign for 9D by the HDRB. And we're currently fundraising. Owen Carmasino, the Boy Scout is gonna be fundraising. And we hope to have the, the sign fabricated sometime within the next few weeks or month and then ready to be installed as the, as the ground thawers, which is coming up soon. So before his, um, his deadline before his 18th birthday. And any questions about that?
I'd see it progressing.
Yes.
Two recommendations from you. Are you ready? Sorry, I'm interrupting you.
No, no, that's fine. Uh, that, that was my next item was, uh, yeah, so we had tabled the, the vote from our last meeting for the Hudson Valley Wine and Food Festival. Pending a draft site plan and for them to confirm parking at Haldeen. And since then, they provided both the site plan and the, and they did get confirmation from Haldeen that they can park on the, uh, the weekend, uh, the event. So so it's our recommendation, the rec's recommendation that the, uh, the application can be approved.
One question that came in after our last discussion was there was misunderstanding that the parking spaces along the, the front of Mayor's Park along Fair Street, that those would be off limits. And for clarity, that meant off limits for vendors. The vendors will be parking off-site on the Highway Department lot, but those metered spots are still open for public use on that day, whether it's event attendees or other, or other visitors. Does anyone have follow-up questions related to this event? Okay. So we, we tabled it the last time. So now we need a motion to approve. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make it. Motion to approve the, let's call it, the Putnam County Wine and Food Festival on August 6th and 7th.
On the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? And Lauren, I didn't realize you were here. I saw the name Michelle Cohen. I didn't realize that was you, Lauren. Hi.
My daughter uses this computer. I should change it.
Thank you for, thank you for providing me additional information. And in follow-up to another previous conversation related to REC, I have had a conversation with Chair Amato regarding the opportunity that these two big events, Lauren's event and the Brews With Views event provide, yeah, for us to get a sense of, a better sense of attendance, stay, traffic flow, et cetera. And to really do some good, some good data collection so that we can make good decisions about, we can really understand the impact of these big events. We've, you know, we've had them, we've had big events in the past. But the, the, the actual tying of, of data and outcomes to decision-making about how we shape them going forward, hasn't been done. And I think it's a great opportunity for, for this board to, and the REC Commission to get a, a good understanding of how we properly balance big events with resident quality of life. Exactly. And we have another proposal from you, which is a happy one. And I think actually Bob Flaherty is the, 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 the requestor of McConville Park. Do you want to tell us about that?
Thank you.
Yes, sure. See ya.
Did you, did you vote on?
Oh, yes, we did. We made a motion. We seconded. All in favor. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, Jeff Amato. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. So tell us about Easter egg hunts.
Yeah. So we're, uh, we're gonna do it again this, this year. We haven't had it for a couple of years, but, but it's a great event. So Knights of Columbus is looking to have their event. I sent it, uh, the application onto Jeff. It came in this week, but we wanted to get it at this meeting. Uh, so the proposed date is April 9th with a tentative date, weather date of April 16th. And it will be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Okay, well, I would love to make a motion regarding an Easter egg hunt. I would vote to approve. I would make a motion to approve. Second?
Second it.
Catherine, all in favor?
Hi. When I left on High Street, that was the, uh, the event of the year.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, this is Bob Flaherty. Uh, I, I've been running this event for quite some years now. Unfortunately, with COVID, we haven't had it last several years. So I think people are looking forward to it hopefully this year. We'll get a big turnout. For the kids, all for the kids.
All for the kids. As it happens, you're the next one on the agenda, Bob. Want to tell us about? Phillips Town?
Yeah, make it quick. Um, pretty late month this, uh, in February, March time. For anyway, the, the new highway garage, there's a report on that. Last several months, really not any work has been taking place over the last month, a month and a half. Still, we're looking at mid-April, uh, late April, mid-May for the material to show. Unfortunately, Carl was under our highway superintendent. He just started his sixth year. Me and Carl got on the board at the same time. And unfortunately, he had some, due to some health issues, he decided that he would step down. We wish Carl, we thank him for all those years of service and we wish him well and I hope his health gets better. He's been, he's still on until the end of, end of the month, uh, into this month. Adam Hotali will be the acting super, supervisor, superintendent of highways until we determine who the replacement will be. Uh, so we do have some time to figure it all out. All the things, we're reappointing Neil Zuckerman to the playing board chair and also reappointing the following to the conservation board, Christopher, Robert Perpetto, Scott Silver, Andy Galler as a chair, and Robert D will continue to be the chair of the zoning board. Uh, we just, we, we're in the process of doing a foods, uh, food scrap recycling. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow night. We also picked up, uh, these food scrap buckets from the town of Scarsdale. As well, I have them up at the recycling center. So we're in the early stages of this, but Karen Earl, Erdl, who's running this, would like to try to uh, come to your board and discuss, discuss it with you. So I told her, you know, I'll get in touch with you and hopefully she can get on your agenda sometime in the very near future. Uh, but it's a, it's a good thing. It's like I said, we've got to figure it all out yet. Uh, but it's a very good thing. It's gonna, you know, it really help our, reduce our carbon footprint here in Phillips Town. And we're looking forward to get that up and running. Also, e-waste, we're in a, we had our first pickup of our air conditioners, first time. Part of this agreement we have with our e-waste agreement with this company they have, they pick up all our air conditioners for free, uh, which is great. So now that gives us a little bit more leeway to use our, uh, we, we take the free on that at these air conditioners, but now we don't need to do that anymore. But now we can have a little extra funds for other equipment that comes that needs free on remove, such as refrigerators. To be quite honest, over the last several years, our refrigerator count has gone down dramatically. Cause I guess people get new refrigerators, most likely the people who deliver them are taking them with them now, which is a good thing. So, uh, which is great. So hopefully continue to go on that process that way. Uh, we approved the Garrison Ambulance Lozap Award. Uh, the Garrison Water District, as I've been saying, the last several months, we did finally get the permits to drill a new well across the street of the 9D and 403. Uh, we don't know when we're gonna get in here. Right now that ground is very saturated and to get a big drill, drilling truck in here, it may be have to wait a little while before that ground gets hardened and dries up a little bit. We have a workshop scheduled for, uh, March 23rd on the Forjay Trail. Uh, so hopefully people from the, all, if anyone from the town, village board would like to attend, please come up and attend that meeting. Uh, I guess this is gonna be kind of the first phase, which is the north of the, uh, of the, of the tunnel. Uh, the playing board is still very busy with the Shakespeare Festival and the public hearing is still going on. Uh, the public hearing, uh, will be the next, next, March 17th will be the, most likely the last of the public hearings. And cause well, there was a few people who didn't get to speak, so we left it open. Uh, that's it.
Great, thanks. And to be clear, the what we're talking about, the, the temporary agreement with the Highway Department will obviously have an intermunicipal agreement and your board and our board will need to, will need to approve the terms of that. So.
Sure, you have no problem.
Thank you for, thank you for helping us out and being good neighbors again.
Anytime we can help, we're here to help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I think we have our legislator with us. Legislator Montgomery? Hi.
Hi there. I'm just amazed. I was just saying you all work so hard and I'm really amazed and thank you all. I see a lot of people on here for your really hard work. So I'll try to make it quick too, because I know you've got a lot and you've already done a lot and it's amazing. I too am looking forward to the outcome of the proposal sent to the county executive for use of the ARPA funding. Um, I also worked with the town supervisor and the hub on their proposals. So it's, you know, on to March, at the county legislature, the legislature approved three charter amendments. One amending the powers and duties of the county executive, amending the executive action on resolutions, amending the executive actions on local laws, actually four charters. Um, and, uh, acting county executive had to designate when to act in emergencies. So just to let you know, I voted no on all four. The county charter is the constitutional framework of the county. Um, and the process and the commission should be inclusive and open to representing all the different geographic areas. This commission and this charter review was made up of one party, only county employees and county representatives and provided no agendas prior to meetings. The process was anything but open. and provided no agendas prior to meetings. The process was anything but open, transparent and inclusive of the entire county. So I voted no. Um, there are more charter changes uh, on, on board. They're discussing some tonight, actually. So we'll see. Um, at that meeting, the March meeting, we also confirmed the appointment of the county historian, Jennifer Cassidy. I'm excited about the work she's been doing. She did a wonderful job for Black History Month and, and exploring the black history of Putnam County. Um, that's all on the Putnam County history website. Good news, the Putnam County Clerk's Office is holding a passport day. April second from nine AM until three PM at forty Clinida Avenue. That's a great opportunity to renew or get your passport. Um, and lastly, this week, I've been attending a week long assembly at our great neighbors at Graymore. Just, just, it's been a, it's been a really great week. Today's focus was on the future of support for addiction services, spirituality as an essential component for successful treatment. Um, also innovative models of service delivery and gaps in service that need to be addressed. We all know this is a really important issue in our community. This is a great institution in our community that provides this service. The sessions today offered national, state, local and personal perspectives. People from DC participated on the panels, Oasis, the New York State experts, and they explored all these issues through the lens of community based organizations and their contributions in addressing the opioid and substance use epidemic. The week continues with more focus on their ministries and, and their work in the community and throughout the world. So that's been a great thing, I think, for, you know, to highlight something that's happening in our community where people from all over, you know, the, the, really the country, um, are participating in how to address these issues. So that's been my work this week and part of March. Any questions, anything you need, you know, I work on trying to get people resources. You know, contacting state and federal officials on whatever unemployment insurance issues, trying to get visas for people from the Ukraine, things like that. So I'm here to help anytime you need. So give me a call.
Thanks. Nancy, if you could please check in with your contacts at the, um, food pantry.
Sure.
Um, we have, the county has more COVID nineteen test kits and folks in the public, we have them, we still have some, town hall still has some. So if you're, if you're looking to find test kits, be in touch with the village clerk, um, and we'll have them ready for you to pick up. If you could let us know if they need, if they need more there, Nan. Thanks. Any questions for?
Great work.
Thanks.
Questions.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks. Uh, okay, chamber. And while, while the chamber is speaking, layer, obviously officer in charge is still with us. Do we still have fire company? Yes, um, there, uh, we've got an event to get on your calendars as well. So Jeff will walk us through that. Hi, Jeff.
Hey, everybody. Nice to see you. So you have the full, uh, report, but the thing to, as you just mentioned, I think, uh, focus on tonight would be the Cold Spring in Bloom event, which the chamber is spearheading. This is, um, in celebration of Earth Day and, uh, coinciding with, uh, I guess a hundred and seventy-six years of incorporation in the village. Um, and we're hoping, and some of you on the, uh, in the, on the board might be more up to date on this because I gather you've been meeting with the Main Street Committee from the chamber, which is, uh, organizing this event, but, um, I guess a few questions, I don't know if they've been resolved yet or not, or whether we can finalize the date of April twenty-second as the date for this event. You know, of course, that would involve getting the green light from the police department, the fire department, uh, for the increased foot traffic on Main Street and, um, for, uh, whether we can get approval for uh, part of this event, which would be involved planting flower buds or bulbs up and down Main Street in the tree pits as well as installing, uh, temporary historical signage, uh, that's being, you know, well, the proposal is to do this with the Putnam History Museum, basically pictures of Cold Spring from previous eras. I think the idea is that from a particular vantage point, if you had a, an old historical photograph of Main Street, it would correspond to the view you're seeing in person. So you'd see how it's changed over the years. Uh, those are, I think, four foot, uh, or no, eighteen by twenty foot, uh, twenty-four inch panels. It would be installed in the tree pits themselves. So getting approval on that, I don't know if that's happened already, but if not, um, it'd be great to get those approved. Uh, I think that's the main thing from the chamber. Yeah.
Eliza probably has an update on that.
Great.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I've been meeting with them, um, every couple of weeks and Catherine came last week to sort of help guide them on processes. Um, they are preparing, uh, sort of a proposal to the board with the signage request. I think that's really the main thing that they need. Um, approval for, for the event. Um, but, uh, you know, as Jeff mentioned, they want to have our, um, blessing on the evening and make sure that the police and fire department available. The bulbs section was something that, um, it's sort of a continuum of what the chamber had done with the tree board in the past. There was a workshop to clean up the flower beds um, that had been done in the past and they wanted to sort of do that again this year where they mulch the beds and prepare them for plantings, but then it wouldn't be until the fall that bulbs would go in. Um, and they're looking to organize sort of an adopt tree pit plan, um, that would get community members to take on tree pits that have not been planted and aren't being tended to and get people to, um, you know, help beautify Main Street.
So I assume, I think that Jen Zoric from the, the tree committee is working with you directly, right?
That's right. Yeah.
So, um, in terms of signage, checking in with the clerk, um, the temporary signs are identified in our code as in place for less than thirty days. Is that correct?
It's less than sixty days.
Less than sixty days. And these are going to be in place for?
I think they just wanted to do it for the weekend. So a Friday night, two hours, second, and then through Sunday or something like that. So people have a chance to see it during the day if they don't make it off that.
I mean, from, from my perspective, I, I think that the tree board is, uh, needs to make the primary decision about things going in the, in the pits. And if they're, if they're comfortable with that and you're working with their guidance, um, I don't, I don't have concerns. Jeff, what would be the mechanism for, for approval on the signs?
You really, because they're temporary signs, they don't require a permit is really no.
Okay.
So, um, should I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to report back to them. That the project is okay going forward. Does the police department or the, um, fire department need to chime in on any additional things that they need to consider for the event?
Well, is there anything that you would need? I mean, in addition to uh, added pedestrian traffic, is there anything happening that requires streets or?
Nope. It'll just be maybe more people for, than a typical Friday night. Um, we can't hear you, Larry. You're muted.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
The only thing that, uh, if it's gonna be, uh, more, uh, traffic, I would suggest having maybe one more officer on foot patrol in case uh, anything is needed from, uh, people planting or, or just direction in general. Um, that's the only thing I would probably request.
Yeah, people won't be planting. They'll just, it, it's, uh, sort of the same way a cold spring of glow was, um, a night without candles, no, no fire anywhere.
Got you.
So it's, it's just gonna be shops being open till eight o'clock at night and, um, having fun events for the community. That's, that's pretty.
Yep, I, I, I'd still like to have one officer walking up and down on the street this way. He's visible also, uh, and a regular patrol that, that, if that's okay.
That seems fine to me.
So if the chamber will follow up with, with Larry with a, a written request, so he, as he's working on scheduling, can make sure to get that in.
Okay. All right, that's it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Chamber. Good stuff. Okay, um, a couple of quick things. We've, we've addressed a lot of the stuff that needed to be addressed under a report of, of mayor and the board under different categories. We hit on Forty Maine. Eliza and Catherine, as I understand, are returning to, uh, a rollout plan for resident parking.
I met with, I met with Bugsy this morning and, uh, he is getting a copy of the report of the recommendations from the parking committee. And I'm gonna, you know, follow up with him to see, you know, to start the, um, process of rolling it out.
Okay, and then, uh, Catherine, just connecting you in with Larry here. There was conversation about a, a sign, a parking sign needed on, um, Rock Street. Maybe you and Catherine can connect on that and get looped into that, um, project. The, the striped area on Rock Street.
I'm not aware.
Larry, Larry's nodding. He knows what I mean.
I got it. Yep.
All right, um, the budget is our primary task, just a very quick, um, when we were re, re-districted, the New York, when the New York State Senate and Assembly were redistricted, we were moved into, um, James Scovis's district. And he is based across the river in Cornwall that puts us in with Peekskill, Beacon and Newburgh. Now, which I think opens possibilities, um, possibilities for us, um, in terms of, um, intermunicipal exchange. Um, we did, Senator Scovis did visit Phillips Town, Nelsonville and Cold Spring last week. Deputy Woods, Deputy Mayor Woods and I met with him, legislator, not legislator Montgomery, but, uh, the deputy mayor of Nelsonville uh, and the town supervisor, uh, also Bob Flaherty was there, deputy supervisor in, in Phillips Town. And we talked through major infrastructure projects focusing again, primarily on the dam. Um, his staff has connected us with some FEMA, um, leads on grants that I sent around earlier this afternoon. So I hope we can, I'll take a look at that and see if there's any possibilities. But I, I wanted to report a piece of progress. Um, and Nancy, while we have you on the phone, we, he, Senator Scovis has helped us, um, to move forward with conversations with Metro North about repair, needed repairs, um, in the tunnel. Um, so we, I have a, an upcoming call on the twenty-second, um, with Metro North to talk through some of the longer term stuff that is beyond cleaning out the storm drains and, um, and dealing with the, the drains in the center of the tunnel, but thinking about things like, like the pump um, um, and the structure and how the underground spring impacts that structure. So. Let's run with that.
You may want to, uh, also involve Neil Zuckerman.
Oh, Neil's part of the conversation. Yes, actually it was Neil who made the first contact
Very good.
Um, to, to Mark Maddox, um, and I'm hoping that Neil's gonna join us on site that day.
Okay, great.
Okay, so this is for Chamber, the foot patrol. Um, any other items? We're good?
I did research the signs that I mentioned to you about the, um, you know, I don't, it can't get done in time for incorporation day, but I did reach out to the people who made the St. Mary's signs. And, um, the turnaround is for, is something like six to eight weeks. Uh, and they preliminarily, without a design to go off of, they were basically saying somewhere in the twenty-five hundred dollar a piece range, depending on what we want to do. So.
So what, what trustee Fatty is talking about, she had a proposal to try to rationalize the entrance, the entrances to the village and the signage of the entrances. It's sort of a cacophony of signs now. Um, so obviously that would need, um, for the discussion by us, um, and potentially the, um, the HDRB where they're in the district. So, um, but thank you for doing that initial information getting.
Catherine, a quick question?
Yeah.
Regards to the, the parking plan? Is the idea to get it back in motion and then have a public education period? Because I know it's been kind of on the back burner for a while and then it's official rollout?
Absolutely. And Eliza, do you want to speak to that?
Um, yeah, I mean, the last board kind of, um, proved it, but I'm not, it, it wasn't clear if it was completely adopted as is or if there's, you know, it changes to be made, but, um, from my understanding of it, that was pretty much a complete plan. And, um, there were several presentations of it and, and versions of it that were presented. So I think it's a great idea to maybe do a workshop to present it again of what we intend to do. So it's very clear. Um, I think that we will have to do quite a lot of sort of social media communications. Um, we could consider doing window signage at Village Hall, like graphic posters that explain it. And obviously there'll be signage on the streets, on the street signs telling people how to pay for their parking meters on weekends and main, on Main Street and that where the residents are only allowed parking with permits. So, um, but I think that we should definitely present it again before we start putting signs up because it's been a while and a lot of us have forgotten what all those little details are.
Absolutely.
And, and just to review the, the eleven street, um, resident permitted parking area is the first area that, um, will be addressed. Um, to make sure that we have, uh, parking in space, parking in place for residents on those streets, um, and portions of those areas reserved for, um, available open parking.
About it too. Um, I know that in order to change any resident and parking rules for Main Street residents, we would have to go to the state and, um, see if there was something that could be done. But I think if this is something, a, a revenue stream that the village is serious about, and there is great potential of parking meters on Main Street, we should consider, um, working with the state to see if there's a way to get parking permits for our residents on Main Street to park in the residential parking district, you know, sort of restructuring it. Um, so I would, I would be happy to look into that if that's something that the board.
That would be great. Um, I was.
May I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Because I got that legislation done. I can tell you that they do not allow resident parking permits in the commercial, on a commercial street. On a commercial street. Unless in the six years since that went through, something has changed in Albany, but that is not part of how they allow you to have a resident parking permit designated area.
Right, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking of giving the Main Street residents permits to park on the side streams where there is residential parking that's only permitted for residents. I, I, again, I have to research it and look into it. It may not be possible, but if it is, I think we should consider it an option.
A good, a good contact for you, um, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm not remembering his name right now, but the, the, um, the legislative lead for, for, um, Senator Scovis can, can probably be helpful and sent, starting you out um, in a direction, David something, I'm going blank. Remind me tomorrow and I'll, I'll give you that contact.
Thank you.
Yep.
So just one request, Catherine, if there's anything different with regards to the parking than what's on the website? If we could just get a copy of that sent to all of us? I know there is some.
It's right at the, it's right on the website.
Okay, so that's the most recent one and that's the plan that was adopted?
Yes, well, it was accepted. The recommendations of the parking committee were accepted by the Board of Trustees, but then no further action was taken in terms of implementation, right?
So we need to actually adopt that recommendation or has that already been done?
It was, the, the recommendations were accepted. We need to decide which become implemented and that's a public conversation.
I have.
Um, okay, now the next one, Putnam County prepares our property tax bills. This is a bit of housekeeping, um, in terms of resolution. This, uh, authorizes the mayor to sign a contract with Putnam County Real Property for the preparation of our twenty twenty two village tax rolls and bills. And obviously, we need that as part of our conversation. As we progress through budget conversation, we need we need that from the county to do that. So would someone else, this is authorizing me, so would someone else move move the resolution, please?
I'll make a motion to accept number oh six two oh two two. Authorizing the mayor's signature to contract from Putnam County Real Property for preparation of the twenty twenty two village tax rolls and bills.
You wanna?
Read the rest of it?
Yes, please.
Okay, the following resolution was offered by
You.
Myself, Joe Curdo, for adoption and seconded by
I'll second it.
Catherine Fad to wit, whereas the Putnam County Real Property Tax Services has tendered a proposed contract to the village, providing for certain services in regard to preparation of the village's tax rolls and bills, and whereas the Village Board finds that is in the best interests of the village to enter into said contract. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village Board does approve the proposed contract, a copy of which is attached hereto, and the mayor is authorized to execute said agreement and any documents necessary for its implementation. On roll call vote.
All right, trustee Curdo.
Aye.
Trustee Fatty.
Aye.
Trustee Starbuck.
Aye.
Trustee Woods. Trustee Woods.
You know, I don't see her. I wonder if she's lost her connection. I don't see her.
Oh, she's she's in the waiting room trying to get back in.
Okay.
I'll go Mayor Foley.
Aye. Tweets, we've made a motion, Joe has made a motion and Catherine has seconded to authorize me to sign the agreement with Putnam County for the preparation of our tax rolls.
Sorry, I got I got knocked off. I, I.
I.
Officially adopted on this date by a vote of five year.
Thanks. Okay. We have the for us next resolution of the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees, supporting the enactment of a universal health coverage system as proposed in the New York Health Act. I want to thank Jeff Mickelson and Michaelson and the Chamber, excuse me. I know how to pronounce your name. I just manage to mispronounce it every time, and it's it's very rude. I'm sorry. Thank you for the presentation that you made to the board. Thank thank you also to our treasurer for providing guidance from a municipal fiscal perspective. Would someone like to make this motion? Tweets, is that you saying yes?
Yes, but I'm having some technical issues getting to the document, so hold please.
Kathleen, thank you for introducing this, but as as the person.
We'll take comment after, we'll take comment in the public comment period.
I was just gonna request that I could, if I could make a comment before.
You can make a comment during the public comment period. We're taking, we're in, we're moving a resolution right now.
Okay, but you're gonna vote on it before that happens.
We take, as you'll see on the agenda, public comments at the end.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tweets.
All right, sorry, I'm just looking, getting it up here now, because my whole computer went down. So one second, please. Okay, that's one, okay. Tax bill, all right, here we go. Resolution zero seven dash two zero two two, resolution of the Village of Cold Spring, Board of Trustees, supporting the enactment of a universal healthcare coverage system as proposed in the New York Healthcare Act. Should I read it, or? Is? Am I making the motion to?
You are making the motion.
Okay, so I make a motion to vote on this resolution. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I believe it's.
Favor.
We have to read the whole thing.
Jeff, do we, would you like us to read it into the record? Clerk Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Tweets.
Okay. The following resolution was offered by, I guess, myself for adoption and seconded by trustee Curdo. Whereas the New Yorkers, whereas New Yorkers have experienced rapid rise in the cost of healthcare premiums out of out of pocket costs in recent years. Sorry. And whereas, according to the New York State Health Foundation, approximately one million New Yorkers have no health insurance and millions more are under underinsured, meaning that they have in insurance but aren't able to use it because of high deductibles and co-pays. And whereas medical debt is a major case or cause of bankruptcy in the United States, and you know, in New York hospitals have the ability to place liens on patients' homes over medical bills. And whereas patients and healthcare professionals are often forced to base medical care decisions on what insurance companies will cover, rather than what patients and provider agree is the best course of treatment. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic revealed the inadequacy of our public healthcare system, amplifying racial, sexual, economic inequalities and widening structural gaps in the provision of medical and long term care. And whereas providing healthcare coverage for employees is a large financial responsibility for municipalities, school systems, farms and businesses. And whereas the New York Constitution states the protection and promotion of the health of inhabitants of the state are are matters of public concern and provision, therefore, shall be made by the state. And whereas, sorry, where's the New York Health Act? NYHA presently in committees at the New York State Assembly and Senate as previous, as respectively Bill A six zero five eight A and Bill S five four seven four will amend New York State's public health law comprehensively to provide medical and health coverage to all New Yorkers. And whereas the NYHA aims to extend comprehensive healthcare to every resident and full time worker in the state of New York, regardless of age, income and unemployment status or ability to pay, with no premiums, co-pays or deductibles. And whereas it is the goal of the NYHA to cover all primary specialty, emergency and preventative care, mental and reproductive health, dental, vision, hearing, prescription drugs and long term care with no network restrictions, prior authorization or out of network charges. And whereas the NYHA may potentially save money for the state of New York by eliminating administrative costs of private health insurance and by potentially enabling the state to lower rates on prescription drugs and medical devices while potentially lowering the annual cost of healthcare for New York, New York residents. And whereas the NY HA has already passed the New York State Assembly five times and has majority cosponsorship in both the New York State Assembly and Senate. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring supports further consideration of the New York Healthcare Act by the State Assembly and Senate and encourages the pursuit of universal health coverage for all New Yorkers. And may be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to Governor Hochul, Senate Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, Republican Leader Senator Flanigan, Assembly Speaker Hasty, Republican Leader Assembly Assembly Member Barclay, Senator Serrano, Assembly Member Galiff, Health Committee Chair Senator Rivera, and Assembly Member Godfrey, and New York Health Commissioner Dr.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Tweets, you soldiered through there. Thank you very much. Discussion among board members?
I don't feel like this is what the public asked us to do. When this resolution was requested and proposed, it was, we were asked as a board to support the enactment of the New York Health Act. And we've kind of said everything but that. So unfortunately, I I appreciate all the work that the mayor and the other board members put into editing it to find a version that they feel is acceptable, but I don't think that this actually does anything for moving the New York Health Act forward. So that's how I feel about it.
Any other comment?
I just wanted to ask a question. Um, really, because I'm kind of familiar with mass health. Is, I mean, this is a similar type of of setup if it went through. Am I, am I understanding it correctly?
Canadian healthcare.
Cut out at the beginning, Eliza, I didn't hear what you said.
It it would be similar to like what they have in Canada, where they have a universal health system that's through the government, and you would not be having to pick the doctor that's in your system, in your plan. Everybody gets access to the same doc, to all the doctors. You have your healthcare, your mental healthcare covered through the taxpayer funds. So.
I think mass health is pretty much like that.
Okay.
That was a Romney did that in Massachusetts. That's right. I know people that took advantage of that, I was to say.
Just to pipe in. As I stated publicly before, I have concerns about the New York Health Act as it's written. I have concerns about New York State running something of that magnitude. I also have concerns about the costs, which are not specified and defined as of yet. I do support this resolution, and if it help gets it to the governor and the majority leader and the assembly person where they can actually study it nonpartisanshipally and then possibly bring it for a vote, that would be fine. But I don't support the Health Act as it's currently written. I think there's still a lot of issues with it. And from a financial standpoint, I I see a lot of issues. So that's just where I stand.
Tweets, do you have any comment?
All right, I got.
Or just thirty?
Seriously. I mean, I think as as a proposal, I am support, I support this. I think this, as a village, a resolution stating the support is is with within the realm of of our leadership. I don't think we're, this will not be something that we will ever be voting on. This is not something that we can actually pass our own legislation. We cannot do any formation of taxes or, you know, this is this, the real, the bulk, the bulk, and basically a hundred percent of the work needs to be done by the state. And they need to move it along, and if it gets moved along and then it comes down to us, then we work on it. So, I mean, I think, given what what you've what's been presented to us, I think the fact that we are saying that the village is in support of this moving forward and and getting looked at and worked on is very reasonable.
And edits that I requested, just for for context for the public, there were in the, what was put forward, and 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 this is how, this is how local legislation works. A proposal comes forward. Perhaps it's initiated by a trustee, perhaps it's initiated by members of the public. The trustees then review the draft that's before them and gather their own information. For us, we consulted on our village treasurer, who also is the person who administers our healthcare program, our healthcare plan for not only our current employees, but our retirees. And and she outlined specific concerns related to retirees that I think are worth worth considering and and need some need need additional thought on. There's a reason that that the law has been sitting and not moving forward for almost three decades. The 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 the, I am broadly in support of universal health. I see it working really well in Massachusetts. What I asked to have taken out of this resolution were references to the Haldane School District, a village, a village resolution. We don't, we don't need to be making a reference to Haldane, nor should we be. And specific estimations of what the village would save. Those were particularly, those were, those were numbers compiled by an advocacy organization. Those weren't numbers prepared by the Village of Cold Spring, and I didn't think it's appropriate to include them in this, in this resolution being passed by this village board. And I also frankly asked for the removal of statements related to the the value of that particular bill for every resident of Cold Spring. I don't know that it has value for every resident of Cold Spring. So I feel that what we've got to, and this is how this this is frankly how the sausage gets made. We put forward an idea, we talk it through, and we find, we find something we can agree on, and what we're agreeing on here references clearly the New York Health Act. But it's, it's asking us, we are being, we are enacting, asking, asking the Senate and the state to enact a universal healthcare coverage system as proposed. So I think we've reached a good compromise here. We have a motion. We have a second. Is this a roll call vote? It is a roll call vote. Will you please call the roll clerk? Do we have the clerk? Oh, there he is.
All right, I was muted. Trustee Curdo.
Aye.
Trustee Fatty.
Aye.
Trustee Starbuck. Starbuck.
No.
Trustee Woods.
Aye.
And Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Officially adopted on this date by a vote of four one.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item twenty one. So we discussed last time the proposed purchase of village property by Jim Eli at forty five Main Street. A portion of his front outdoor seating area, partially enclosed seating area, was constructed on village property. And we were able to confirm with a record search that the construction was approved without the sale of the property, but we didn't have a clear record of why. We tabled the the motion to sell until we confirmed that the number that we were working from in terms of a sale per square foot price was a reasonable price. I followed up with the town assessor, who confirmed that, find the language from him. The town's market increase, equalization percentage, which is the equalization percentage established by New York State that measures changes in sales versus assessment. That rate would lead him to set a price at four dollars and sixty five cents a square foot rather than four. So I would put a motion on the table to proceed with negotiation on sale of the property to Mr. Eli at a rate of four dollars and sixty five cents a square foot with the coverage of legal cost by the purchaser.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eliza, did you?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks. So Jeff will follow up with Mr. Eli on that. Okay, we have correspondence from village resident, Dr. Catherine Carnivalle, who sent in a request saying, can we get a Ukraine flag and hang it on the bandstand? I'm happy to pay for it to show solidarity with Ukrainians. And we were contacted by another resident of the village who has, who has a flag that she has offered to donate. So I put that request forward to the trustees and ask for your thoughts on that request. This is not replacing the American flag. It would be in addition to the American flag.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
I'm in support as well.
Me as well.
Joe?
Yeah, I guess my only question is, because I know I've seen in a lot of municipalities, not necessarily hanging the flag with the American flag, but other displays. And I'm just wondering, is there some kind of legality to that?
Well, that is.
I'm going in favor of the concept. I know the Village of Lake Placid just did something where they put flags all up and down Main Street, but it not, wasn't necessarily at their official flag designation. So is there a legality to that, or?
I don't know the answer to that, but we will certainly find out the answer to that.
But I'm all in favor of support for the concept in whatever way possible, as long as it's legal.
So could we make a motion to agree to hang the Ukrainian flag in a prominent location in the village that is acceptable under flag protocols? How's that?
Great. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And and thank you to Dr. Carnivalle for putting that proposal forward.
And blue garbage cans.
Send the proposal for navy blue garbage cans. Hats off to to. That's off to Dr. Carnavale. I also wanted to let folks know that, that we do have a number of community members in Cold Spring and Phillips Town who are Ukrainian and are Russian and their families are certainly suffering watching what's happening in the Ukraine. And they have organized a vigil on Saturday, March 12th at noon on St. Mary's Lawn. It will be followed by a prayer service at one in St. Mary's. And then the church hall will be open after the service until five o'clock if folks want to have further discussion. So noon on Saturday. All right, we have tabled 22B, beginning of the meeting. Bills, we have a motion related to bills.
Joe, I'm going to leave it to you. I don't have the batch number.
I don't have the batch number either.
Get one second. Where's my agenda?
What was that?
Also, I'm just looking it up. You cannot fly the flag of another nation along with the United States flag.
All right. So thank you for pointing that out, Joe. We're going to have to get some advice and maybe we can reach out to, to veterans in the community who would have some guidance for appropriate and respectful alternatives.
The batch number is six, three, nine, seven.
The amount?
Fifty thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve batch number six, three, nine, seven in the amount of fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, last we have minutes. Now the fifth. So Deputy Mayor Woods and Trustee Starbuck were absent on the fifth. So I need Catherine and Joe to make a motion related to those minutes.
I'll make a motion for the acceptance of minutes dated January 5th, 2022.
Is that your seconding, Joe? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eye, bow, eye. Okay, and we were all present. These are the minutes from the public presentation on garbage. Have a motion on the minutes of February 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Public comment? Are there any raised hands?
Jocelyn?
Before we call on Jocelyn, thank you, Jocelyn. We will call on you. Are there any village residents?
Yeah, I have my hand up.
Jeff.
Thank you. So as the person who put forward this proposal in the first place in January, I find myself in the odd position now of agreeing with trustee Starbuck that the revised version that you've put forward and voted on tonight is not only not the resolution that I proposed in January and that several members of the community have written letters to the board in support of and, and letters to local publications in support of that about 75 people have signed a petition in support of. And that, as I mentioned in earlier meetings, the Chamber of Commerce of Cold Spring has voted unanimously. The board has voted unanimously in support of. So it's not that resolution. But not only is it not the same resolution that all of those community members support in and of itself, it's not a resolution worth passing. And had I been on the board, I would have voted as trustee Starbuck did against this resolution. There's some good stuff in it, obviously. The critique of our current healthcare system is accurate. It's a complete disaster. And I think every, almost all parties of any political stripe would agree with that. But where this resolution falls short, and actually in some ways is worse than passing no resolution at all, is in one, removing the parts that are probably most relevant to this board, which are the substantial savings, even if you weren't willing to commit to a number. It's a substantial savings that every study that's ever been done on this bill and on similar bills has shown the village would enjoy. It's to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. It could have been passed on, that could be passed on to local residents in the form of public services or in the form of tax cuts. So that's a pretty big omission. There are others, I think there are ways this revised version mischaracterizes the bill. For example, it describes the comprehensive care covering all the things that you listed as a goal or an aim of this bill. Whereas those are statutory requirements of the bill. They're explicitly written into it, so they're not goals. If this bill passes, those things will be covered. But I think the most important thing, and as, as trustee Starbuck pointed out, it does not endorse the New York Health Act. What it does is support further consideration of the New York Health Act by the State Assembly and Senate. Now, that is happening and will continue to happen regardless of this resolution. So you're really urging the state legislature to continue the status quo, right? This, as I think the mayor, Mayor Foley pointed out, this bill has been in, in consideration for 30 years now. It has picked up a lot of momentum in recent years. And it has come closer and closer to passing. We're now at majorities in both houses in support of it. In particular, the legislators here in the Hudson Valley play a pivotal role in that. So with all due respect, trustee Woods, I disagree that this decision by this village board would have no impact because, believe me, I talked to these, I talked to a senator today from the Hudson Valley and I talked to the one that Mayor Foley mentioned earlier in this call or last week. And I do mention the support that this bill has from local municipalities and counties when I talk to these state legislators and it does impact their thinking on whether to move it forward. Honestly, insofar as this is essentially, this resolution is essentially an endorsement of the status quo, you might as well pass a resolution in support of the Hudson Valley or the Hudson River continuing to flow. You're, you're, you're simply stating what is already happening and saying you support that. I, I guess it's a good thing that you didn't take a position against the New York Health Act. But what I would love this board to consider doing, now that it's passed this resolution, is pass a, an additional one in support of the New York Health Act to have the courage, as Phillips Town has already done, as many municipalities in the, in the Hudson Valley and around the state of New York have already done, most recently Ulster County a couple of weeks ago. Beacon will probably be doing this in the, in the next few weeks, which, which is to take a stand and say, I support this bill. I want, I don't want, you know, in the abstract, universal healthcare, I don't want people in the abstract to stop dying from lack of coverage and going bankrupt from it. I want New York to pass a bill to change that. And that's exactly what the New York Health Act would do. And so going forward, I would ask this board to consider passing a second resolution supporting the New York Health Act. Thank you.
For your comments, Jeff. Jocelyn?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Jocelyn Appicello. I am a resident of Garrison. But I am coming here on behalf of a small group representing the Butterfield Library, the Desmond Fish Library, the Garrison Union Free School District and Haldane. And I'm coming just to make the board, the mayor of the board, the public aware of a survey that's happening. It is an online anonymous survey that is, is focusing on issues related to diversity, equity and inclusion in the town of Phillips Town. We are using this survey to help, help inform how these four institutions will work together to create kind of programming that is community-wide. The survey is currently online and is open to any resident of Phillips Town, as well as anyone working in Phillips Town or visiting Phillips Town to weigh in on what kind of programming they might want to see in the future. As I said, it's, it's online now at a bit.ly slash Phillips Town D E I. And there's also a Spanish version available, B I T dot L Y slash Phillips Town Espanol D E I. And there's printed copies available at both of the libraries. So I just wanted to let everyone know, I hope that, I hope that trustees take it. I hope you have your family and friends also take it. And if you, if there's any way for the village to help share the survey availability, we would appreciate it. It's only open, you know, it'll be open for a few weeks. Our goal is to have about 700 people if we could in Phillips Town take the survey. So it's, and it's also open to middle school students and above. So it's, can capture a lot of opinions. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Also, Johanna at Butterfield is, knows all about this, Deidre at Desmond Fish, and then of course Haldane also. So you can, you can reach out to whoever you feel most comfortable reaching out to to kind of learn more about the collaboration that's happening.
May I ask a board members a question? Is this something that we feel we could provide a link to on our website and our, or on our, and/or on our social media?
I would support that.
I would support that too.
I support it.
Yeah, I got an email from the town's email listserv with a link to it.
Do that as well.
Graphic involved, so I can put that on our social media and share it that way if, if everybody agrees to that.
That's great. Thank you so much.
I can share graphics, which also have a QR code, so it's easy. You don't have to memorize that website. I just tried to read out. So I will get that to, to the trustees, to the village. Any other questions?
Thank you so much for doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to. And happy to share the results when we finally get them. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Jeff, I think Rebecca is raising her hand.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Usually I have the option to raise my hand and I, I tried several times and wasn't finding it easy. Yeah, I, I am just here, Rebecca Ramirez, 13 Church Street. I am here also echoing or piggybacking on, on Jeff's comments. And, and thank you, Eliza, for, for pausing and slowing down before voting on that resolution. You know, I'm, I'm disappointed because in, in, in that meeting, in that moment of the voting, Catherine, Catherine asked, is this like Massachusetts? And the fact that one of the trustees is expressing that, that she doesn't know for sure if this is what, you know, it is comparable to. Someone clearly hadn't, and maybe more than her, didn't have the time. Because you, you all have a lot on your plate and I get that because I have a lot on my plate and I don't know, as a resident, that is very enthusiastic about it. I myself don't know all that I should know about the Health Act. I know that it's been 30 years and that it's been worked on and there's been hearings to improve it and improve it. And the last hearing was, you know, for unions to make it better. And we're about to lose the, the person that's spearheading this bill. And we're going to lose all, are we going to lose those 30 years? So, so I just, I thank you for pausing, Eliza, and I just, I echo Jeff's request to vote on a, an updated resolution. And not at this time, Joe, but it would be really interesting to hear what, what your concerns are. Very specifically, and it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but if, if even you sent them to Jeff and he could let all, all the people that have worked on the Health Act here, all of the resident-led groups, the Hudson Valley demands New York Health Act, there's a lot of people not listening. They're not here at this meeting, you know. We, my kid was in bed waiting for me to get off of this meeting. And I think these people, New Yorkers and especially people in Cold Spring are really in support of this bill that's revolutionary and practical. And and I'm disappointed that they're not here, but I get it. Everyone's stretched really thin. But I think they're going to see, I, I think they're going to want to see more from this board. And I hope that, I hope that you're, you're listening. That's all. Thank you.
Who were you? Are you saying you can speak, Joe? No.
Does not look like we have any comments.
Okay. So thank you very much, Rebecca, for your comments. And, and I would like to say that I, the amount of support that you've built has been amazing. You've got, you've got community support, you've got chamber support. You've got, what, 75 folks who signed. There is, there is support coming out of Cold Spring and this board approved a resolution that we felt we could approve. And so now it, it goes to the state and that's where this decision gets made. And so encourage folks who feel strongly about it to continue to speak with their legislators. On our end, it is an encouragement and that's what this board, or members of this board, for three, four members of this board felt that, that we could support. So thank you very much for putting it forward. May I have a motion to adjourn if we have no further comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.